Appreciate everybody being here tonight. Y'all bow with me, I'll lead us in our invocation tonight. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight, Lord, and just ask you for your blessings on our community. We just pray for the upcoming elections that your will would be done. And Lord, just be with us here tonight as we come to conduct the business of the county. We just ask for your blessings here tonight. We just pray that everything that is said and done here tonight will honor and glorify you. And Lord, just be with those that are unable to be with us here tonight. Lord, give us all safe travel home as we depart here this evening. In your name we pray, amen. Y'all stand, we'll pledge the United States flag and then to our Georgia flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Then our Georgia state flag. I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag, to the principles to which it stands, wisdom, justice and modish.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, in the packets, and there are some packets out front that we made available. Also, the full version of the packet is available on the website. Some of the larger documents have got condensed down, but you can see the entire version on the website. We do have our minutes from our scheduled public meeting back on December the 10th, 2020. That's in the packet. Is there any corrections or concerns about those minutes from the public hearing? Here you none will sign those into the record. And on that same night, December the 10th, we had our regular scheduled meeting, we have the minutes for that as well. Any questions or concerns from those minutes? Here you none will sign those into the record. Okay, then our item number one is a resolution, R zero thirty-six dash twenty, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County to adopt a policy for law enforcement officers upon retirement or disability to retain their service weapon. Whereas the sole commissioner is the governing authority of Walker County. Whereas the official code of Georgia autonomy, section thirty-five-one dash twenty B, authorizes the governing authority of each county which employed sworn law enforcement officers who are certified by the Georgia Peace Officers Standard and Training Council to adopt a policy under which such sworn officers upon their retirement from employment by the county or upon leaving such employment as a result of disability arising in the line of duty shall be entitled as part of their compensation to retain their service weapon. And whereas the county desires to adopt the above referenced policy. Therefore be it resolved by the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that the county adopts a policy that sworn law enforcement officers upon recommendation of the county sheriff or the other appropriate commanders of the office, officers who have been employed by the county and are certified by the Georgia Peace Officer Standards and Training Council upon their retirement from the county or upon leaving such employment as a result of a disability arising in the line of duty shall be entitled as part of their compensation to retain their service weapon as part of their compensation. There shall be a resolution adopted by the county governing authority setting forth the name of each such officer and make, and the make and model and serial number of the service weapon. So it resolved and adopted the twenty-ninth day of December, 2020. And you will see, uh, let me get to that here in a second. So this here is to set this policy in place. The state of Georgia makes this available to local governments to adopt. We couldn't find where this had been adopted in the past, so to make sure that this was done properly. We wanted to adopt this code section so we can actually honor our service members that meet these qualifications going forward to be able to let them have their service firearm on their departure of their retirement. Sign this into the record. So the next is a resolution R zero thirty-seven dash twenty, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County for retired Walker County Sheriff's Officer Captain Gerald A. Burke Cagle to retain his service weapon. Whereas the county has adopted a policy authorizing retired sworn law enforcement officers upon recommendation of the county sheriff or other appropriate commanders shall be entitled to retain their service weapon as part of their compensation. Whereas Captain Gerald A. Burke Cagle has retired from Walker County Sheriff's Office with more than thirty years of honorable service to the citizens of Walker County. And whereas attached here to exhibit A is a copy of the letter from Sheriff Steve Wilson to the sole commissioner Shannon K. Whitfield recommending that Captain Cagle's service weapon be retained by him as part of his compensation. Therefore be it resolved by the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that retired Captain Gerald A. Burke Cagle's service weapon Glock Model G seventeen, serial number GBYC dash three oh four be retained by Captain Cagle as part of his compensation. So resolved and adopted the twenty-ninth day of December. We'll see exhibit A is a letter from our sheriff dated December sixteenth, 2020. So dear Commissioner, on July the thirty-first of 2020, Captain Gerald A. Burke Cagle retired from Walker County Sheriff's Office with more than thirty years of honorable service to the citizens of Walker County. Therefore pursuant to OCGA thirty-five-one dash twenty, I am recommending that his service weapon, Glock Model G seventeen, serial number BGYC three oh four be conveyed to Captain Cagle as part of his retirement compensation. I appreciate your consideration with warm regards, Sheriff Wilson, Sheriff Steve Wilson, Walker County Sheriff's Office. Sign this resolution. Mr. Cagle wasn't able to be here with us tonight, but our sheriff is here with us and we if you will express our gratitude and thanks to Mr. Cagle and sorry he wasn't able to be here. But if you've got anything you would like to add?
Certainly appreciate the Commissioner doing this and the governing authority making this going forward a more clearer practice for retired law enforcement officers. I think it's the least we can do for someone that's given twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five years of service to the county. And I know he'll be appreciative of this for many years to come.
I think it'd be good in order to give Mr. Cagle a round of applause. He's not with us, but we are videoing this tonight. Thank you, Bert, for your service to our county. We wish you well in your retirement. Okay, we have a resolution R thirty-eight twenty, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County for Walker County Coroner Dwayne Wilson to retain his service weapon. Whereas Dwayne Wilson has served twenty years of honorable service as the county coroner of the citizens of Walker County. Therefore be it resolved Shannon K. Whitfield, the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that as part of Dwayne Wilson's compensation as county coroner, he shall retain the service weapon that was issued to him during his term of service as coroner, a Glock Model thirty-six, serial number DUL thirty-four-six U.S. So it resolved and adopted the twenty-ninth day of December of 2020. And Dwayne is with us here tonight back in the back. Dwayne, thank you for your service and we wish you well as you move forward and thank you for all that you've done for Walker County. Okay, the next item of business is a resolution R thirty-nine dash twenty, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County to adopt a member of the Walker County Planning Commission. Whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County is the governing authority for Walker County, Georgia. And whereas by previous ordinance of Walker County, the sole commissioner appoints members to the Walker County Planning Commission for four-year terms. Walker County Code of Ordinance thirty-four dash thirty-two. And whereas a vacancy exists due to the resignation of Sid Adams, who term expires on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. Whereas Todd Holt is duly qualified to serve as a member of the Planning Commission and has expressed a willingness to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity. Therefore be it resolved by the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that Todd Holt is hereby approved and appointed to assume the term on the Planning Commission, concluding December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. Under such conditions that set forth by law, so it resolved and adopted the twenty-ninth day of two thousand and twenty. So what we're doing here is this is filling Sid Adams' remaining time of his term. This is not creating a new term, this is not creating a new member or position to that board. It is simply filling the vacancy and to keep everything in the proper rotation order. You'll see there his term is less than four years, so he's just filling the unexpired portion of Sid Adams' term going forward. Then we have a letter to Todd Holt, fifty-five Gordon Farm Road, Chickamauga, Georgia. Dear Mr. Holt, it is great pleasure that I appoint you to the Walker County Planning Commission. Your term begins on January one of two thousand twenty-one and expires on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. Thank you for your continued support to the citizens of Walker County and your willingness to serve them in this important capacity. If I can provide any assistance, please do not hesitate to contact me. So I'll sign this letter. Sorry, it needs to be attested by the clerk. This next one here, appoint a member to the Board of Tax Assessor. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I noticed all of your appointments that you had listed basically up until number twelve. Can any of those or all of those be tabled until the full commission's in place?
No, so these are things that need to move forward to keep things moving in county government.
They have to be done within the next week?
Yeah, because the next regular scheduled meeting that the Board of Commissioners would have is most likely going to be on the fourteenth of January.
So two weeks, the government can't function without these appointments?
We're gonna continue on, thank you.
Commissioner, I would like to also interject. I know being a Commissioner-elect, I would request that the appointments be tabled until the board can convene. I've also spoken with Commissioner, I would like to ask you, he has the same feelings about this. We're so close to convening the board. I just feel as though that it would be the proper thing to do, so I respectfully request that these appointments be tabled.
I do as a citizen as well.
Okay, this next one here is a great sadness because this was actually of a of a passing of a loss of one of our members, Ms. Shirley Neal. Your, I heard his request and we're gonna move forward, thank you. Resolution R forty dash twenty, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County to appoint a member of the Walker County Board of Tax Assessors. Whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. Whereas OCGA forty-eight-five dash two ninety-five provides that the members of the County Board of Tax Assessors shall be appointed by the county governing authority and whereas a vacancy on the Walker County Board of Tax Authority due to the passing of Shirley Neal. Whereas Ms. Neal's terms is not expired until December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. And whereas pursuant to OCGA forty-eight dash five dash two ninety-one, Melba Powell is duly qualified to serve as a member of the Walker County Board of Tax Assessor and is agreeable to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity. Therefore be it resolved by the sole commissioner of Walker County that Melba Powell is hereby appointed, approved and appointed to the Walker County Board of Tax Assessors effective immediately under conditions that set forth by law to finish the term concludes on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. So resolved and adopted the twenty-ninth day of December of two thousand twenty. This is a situation where the members of this board have to be trained before they can even vote on any action items that the Board of Tax Assessors would have. Ms. Melba Powell retired right at a year ago. And so she was recommended to us by Buddy Chapman, who is the chairman of the planning, excuse me, of the Tax Assessors Board, because they knew that Melba Powell had served brought great honor to the community and that she was a member that would be trained, that could start the very first meeting of the year and not have to go through the training. Where going forward, any new person going onto this board would have to try to get trained, which could be very challenging during the COVID times and would probably have to do the training online. And so they requested that we ask Melba Powell and so I reached out to her. She did comment that she would under the circumstances, but she wanted to be retired. But she agreed to step back up and serve her county so she could help the county continue to move forward and honor the request of the chairman of that board. This is also a very similar letter thanking Ms. Powell for serving. Read it, it's very similar to the last one. Okay, the next resolution is an R forty-one dash twenty, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County to appoint members of the Animal Control Board. Whereas OCGA four dash eight dash twenty-three A two provides that the Animal Control Board is authorized, the authority charged with exercising those powers set forth of OCGA four dash eight dash twenty-three as determined by the county governing authority. Whereas section ten eighty-one of the Code of Ordinance of Walker County, Georgia, gives the governing authority appointment powers to the member of the Animal Control Board. Whereas there are currently vacancies on the Animal Control Board. Whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County recognizes the qualifications and commitments of public service of Finley Johnson of Rossville and Shannon Beasley of Chickamauga. Therefore be it resolved by the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that Finley Johnson and Shannon Beasley are hereby appointed to the Animal Control Board for a term beginning January one of two thousand twenty-one and concluding on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. This one here is another unique situation. We have been short several Animal Control Board members. This will still leave us about three members short to have the proper number of members and alternates, so there are still remaining positions to fill. One reason for the importance to get this one done is there is a pending case that will come up on the sixth of January where I had filled in for the last two meetings of this board because they didn't have enough to have a quorum because we were short. This case coming up, I have a conflict of interest in that case. And so I'm gonna have to recuse myself from even being at that meeting at all. And so if we don't appoint a couple of more members to this board that can take action right away on January the sixth, that case can end up being dismissed. And so that's why it is important in this situation to get two people appointed that's willing to serve, so we will have a quorum. But there would be at least three more positions that the board can appoint going forward.
What are your requirements for the people that you appoint to this board and qualifications?
Forward, so here's a letter from Ms. Johnson, excuse me, Mr. Johnson, thanking him for his willingness to serve. And also Ms. Beasley. Okay, the next item is a resolution R forty-two dash twenty, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County to appoint members of the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority. Whereas Georgia Governor George Busby approved Act four twenty-one on March twenty-third, nineteen seventy-seven, creating the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, a political subdivision of the state of Georgia and public corporation. And whereas section two B of the Act four twenty-one governs the appointment and term of service of members of the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority. And whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and is vested with duty to make appointments to the authority under section two B of Act four twenty-one. And whereas vacancy exists due to expiration of terms of Anita North, William Cook, Scott Aspin and Shannon Whitfield. And whereas these four individuals are duly qualified to serve as members of the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority and have expressed their willingness to continue to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity. Therefore be it resolved by sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that Anita North is hereby approved and appointed to the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority under such conditions that set forth by law for a term concluding on May thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. Further resolved that sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that William Cook is hereby approved and appointed to the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority under such conditions that set forth by law and term concluding on May thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. Further resolved that Walker County, excuse me, the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that Scott Aspin is hereby approved and appointed to the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority under such conditions that set forth by law and term concluding on May thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. Be it further resolved by the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that Shannon Whitfield is hereby approved and appointed to the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority under such conditions that set forth by law for the term concluding on May thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. So resolved and adopted the twenty-ninth day of December of two thousand twenty. Okay, a little bit of history on this one. Back December the twenty-ninth of two thousand sixteen, the previous administration, previous sole commissioner BB Haskell had the water board members resign except for one. And so she appointed new members to that board. She appointed Scott Aspin in November of two thousand sixteen. She appointed Anita North, Bill Cook and Michael Haney in December of two thousand sixteen. That left John Culpepper on that board. And John Culpepper then resumed as the chair of that board. During that time, you had four brand-new board members and we had a public perception out there that all was well and good at the Water and Sewer Authority. And so, under pressure from the community, within the first week, I think it was, of two thousand seventeen, John Culpepper resigned from the Water Authority, turned in his resignation. So I had a meeting in two thousand seventeen, appointing myself to that board because the way that board was set up, it says if the sole commissioner so desires to be on that board, they can self-appointed themselves and they are automatically the chair of that board. So that put basically five brand-new board members fulfilling unexpired terms. Because the way the Enabling Act was set up for the Water Authority, the terms of that Water Authority come up May thirty-first of each year. So you've got five members. Each member serves a five-year term. So you have a person that rolls up at the end of May of every year. With oversight on my part, we did not reappoint any of these members during these different times through the last four years. They all got appointed by BB Haskell in two thousand sixteen. I appointed myself in January of two thousand seventeen. And the board come together and has been working ever since. We have a great board that has been working through some very, very large challenges with our water system, our sewer system, and they have all expressed desires to see this project through. They want to see the new water plant finished and they want to see the sewer redirect project come to completion. And so they have asked that they continue to serve. Even though I didn't originally appoint them, they have done an outstanding job. They all work very well together, they are all very much independent thinkers and they are not afraid to bring issue or questions to things. And it has been a great pleasure to work with them. So to keep that team together that has weathered these storms and has worked through these many challenges and worked through a situation where we had a water plant that was incapable of operating. And we've had great sewer problems and great infiltration into our sewer. I want to keep that group together so we can move that project forward. So that's the reason for those, so those are just fulfilling and keeping them in line where they already are from a term standpoint. So we have a letter for Ms. North. Okay, this next one is for our Lafette Walker County Library. And what has been customary there is the regional board makes a recommendation, so this is acting off their recommendation. Resolution R forty-three twenty, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County to appoint a member of the Lafette Walker County Library Board, whereas OCGA twenty dash five dash forty-two A provides that the County Board of Trustees shall consist of at least one appointee from each governmental agency financially supporting the library on a regular basis. And whereas OCGA twenty dash five dash forty-two B provides that the Regional Board of Library Trustees shall consist of trustees serving of member county boards who are appointed to the Regional Board by each county board for terms specified in writing pursuant to the Constitution and bylaws of the library. Whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County has the authority to appoint a member to the Lafette Walker County Library Board. Whereas a vacancy exists, the expiration of term held by Ruth Bass. Therefore be it resolved, the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that Jeff Potts is hereby appointed to the Lafette Walker County Library Board for a term concluding on June thirtieth of twenty-three. So resolved and adopted the twenty-ninth day of December of two thousand twenty. And again, we have a letter going to Mr. Potts where we've appointed him to this term expiring on January thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Their next meeting will be at four PM on January the twenty-fifth at the Lafette Walker Library. The way the library system is set up, the cities appoint members to the board of each of the cities and then also the county appoints members. And also the school board has the ability to appoint members as well if they desire because they have contributed financially. And then those members all make up the regional board that are selected to go to the regional board. So again, this is acting upon the recommendation from the regional board and the letters included in the packet from Lisa Eubanks for that request. Okay, resolution R forty-three dash twenty, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County to dissolve Division twenty-third Advanced Team. Whereas the Division twenty-thirty Advanced Team Committee was established on January tenth of two thousand nineteen, our resolution R zero zero three dash nineteen. And whereas the committee served at the pleasure of the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County. Therefore be it resolved by the sole commissioner that Walker County, Georgia, that the existing members of the Division twenty-thirty Advanced Team Committee hereby relieved from their duties as a committee with appreciation for their undertaking and be it further resolved that the committee shall be and hereby dissolved. So resolved and adopted the twenty-ninth day of December of two thousand twenty. This committee has not been active or taken, had any meetings or done anything in probably a year and a half. So since this vision team, something that I created and appointed these members back in two thousand nineteen. in 2019, so that may be a typo, it might have been 2018. It's been quite some time since they've met. There's not any action for them to take. So we're going to resolve this, and then if the board so means to create another team or vision or any other type of committee, then the board can take action and point and approve those members. Resolution R. 4520, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County to authorize that Fort Payne Water Works Board Authority to provide water services in the designated area of Walker County, whereas the attached Exhibit A heretofore is a certain area of Walker County, area that does not currently have public water service available to its residents. And whereas representatives of the Fort Payne Water Works Board, Water Board, and area property owners, property owners have discussed the water board providing water service to the area. And whereas the water board and many of the property owners have requested that the governing authority of Walker County state that it consents to the water board providing water service to the area. Therefore, be it resolved, Shannon K. Whitfield, sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that the county consent to the water board providing water services within the area. If the water board does provide water services, the county will provide the necessary fire hydrants, and the water board will install the fire hydrants, except for providing the fire hydrants, the county is, the county is not at party of any agreement regarding the water board providing the water service, and the county shall be financial, shall, excuse me, shall have no financial responsibility or legal liability for the water services being provided by the water board to the property owners in that area. So resolved and adopted the 29th day of December. I know this map's a little bit hard to read, but this area that this is talking about is up on Lookout Mountain. Basically, if you go to Mountain Co. Farms and go up the mountain, there's an area up there that there's somewhere around 55 to 60 residents that have access to no public water. They're all operating off of wells. Several of them are having problems with their wells, and they have requested and have come and met with us at the commissioner's office requesting some type of water service to be provided. The Walker County Water and Sewer Authority looked at this, but it was going to be a large capital investment to try to reach that area. Fort Payne Water already has a connection to Date County, and they also have a connection to Chautauqua County, and they are selling some water at times to both of these other surrounding counties. They have a desire to loop their system together to provide them more redundancy and reliability of water service. So this really fits into their wheelhouse in the service area where they can bring Chautauqua County and Date County connections together. They have offered the residents a very favorable offer, I believe it was $1,500, that they would, I think it was, oh, it was $2,000. $2,000 for any resident that wants to hook on as they're building out their piping system, and they're even willing to finance that for residents that need that assistance at interest-free. And they will hook them up as their meter and their tap fee and all to do that. They have agreed that any fire hydrants that we would like to provide them, as few are as many that the county wants to provide, they will install those fire hydrants for the county at no cost as they're building out their service lines again. Their water rates per thousand are very reasonable. We've had, like I say, several members in that community that have approached us this year multiple times, very anxious because they're having severe problems with their wells, and some of them to try to drill new wells or to deal with those conditions that they have is going to exceed what their investment would be to hook to public water. Currently, in Walker County, believe it or not, there are nine different entities that currently provide water in Walker County, including our two cities that provide water being Chukamaga and the city of Lafette. So with nine different companies providing service in certain geographical areas, there are still places in our county where there's not public water access. This will still not fix all of that. There are still going to be areas in our county that doesn't have access to public water, but we felt like that this was in the best interest of the citizens to allow another company to come in that's not asking for anything from the county, and there's, again, there's no liability. They're working directly with the landowners and the residents, and so what this is doing, this is just authorizing them to come in and do business within this zone and only within this zone, and for the county government to stand back and basically get out of the way other than provide them fire hydrants. And we'll let the fire chief and his team determine and work with them directly to make sure the proper number and spacing and all that would accommodate. And what this is also going to do, this is going to help those residents with their ISO ratings, so we can get them within, many of them within, you know, 500 feet or so of a fire hydrant, and it will drastically drive down their homeowner's insurance with most insurance providers. So they will have that initial investment for their tap and meter, but many of them will recover that cost probably in the first three years by being able to find more favorable pricing to buy home insurance to cover their home since they will have fire protection if they're within the proper footing to meet those requirements. So this is, this is a win for everybody, and we're happy to welcome Fort Payne Water Works into the community to make a positive impact for our community. Okay, one of the responsibilities that the commissioner's office has is any time that there is a new elected state court judge, there's a newly elected state court solicitor, or a newly elected coroner, the local county commission has to do a resolution to set the starting salary. So we did this back when Chris Townley, thank you, when Chris Townley was elected to be solicitor, state court solicitor, and then upon his passing, we did similar action when Matt Williamson was appointed by the governor to take office. And now that we have a new incoming coroner, we're going to do that to fulfill our responsibility. So this needed to be done before he took office. Resolution R. 46-20, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County to set the compensation for the Walker County coroner, whereas the Georgia General Assembly enacted a local act, Georgia Law 1965, page 2710, that established a salary to be paid to Walker County coroner, whereas the local act has been amended from time to time, and whereas the county is responsible for payment of the coroner's salary, and whereas the annual salary of the coroner is budgeted for the 2020 and 2021 fiscal year to be $28,146.30. Whereas voters elected Billy Sims as coroner on November 3rd of 2020, and he will become the county coroner effective January 1 of 2021. Therefore, be it resolved by Shannon Whitfield, sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that Billy Sims shall be paid a monthly salary of $2,345.53 for his services rendered as county coroner based upon the annual salary of $28,146.30. So it resolved and adopted the 29th day of December of 2020. Again, as it states here, this is what's in the budget, and this is exactly to the penny what the current coroner has been paid, and the new coroner will continue at this rate. Okay, this next resolution was by request. Resolution R. 47-20, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County to decrease the supplement pay to Senior State Court Judge C. Donald Peppers, whereas the Senior State Court Judge C. Donald Peppers, Judge Peppers, has provided many years of service to the county by serving as the state court judge and continues to serve as the Senior State Court Judge. Whereas pursuant to OCGA Section 47-23-106B, Senior State Court Judge Peppers received a monthly supplement instead of his previously, previous salary as state court judge, and whereas Judge Peppers has requested that the dollar amount of his monthly supplement be reduced from the current amount of $3,000 to $2,000 in consideration of the supplement not being reduced, terminated, or otherwise modified in the future without his consent. In addition, if the county breaks the term of the resolution, then the maximum dollar amount that the county shall be liable to pay Judge Peppers is five times his annual supplement of $24,000 for a total of $120,000. Whereas the county is agreeable to and perceived of Judge Peppers' request, therefore be it resolved, Shannon Whitfield, sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that the monthly supplement paid to the county Judge Peppers effective January 1 of 2021 shall be reduced to $2,000. The supplement shall not be reduced, terminated, or otherwise modified in the future without the consent of Judge Peppers. And if the county breaches the terms of this resolution, then the maximum dollar amount that the county shall be liable to pay Judge Peppers is five times his annual supplement of $24,000 for a total of $120,000. So resolved and adopted the 29th day of December of 2020. This is, again, something that he came in and requested. There were similar actions that he brought copies to us, to myself, and also to David Gottlieb, where at one time his monthly supplement pay was $5,000 a month, and then he approached the previous administration and had it lowered to $3,000 a month. And then now he's come forward again on his own free will and asked for it to be reduced to 2,000. So it seems to be in accordance to his, I guess, gradual phase of senior judge status of retirement, and he felt like that this was in the best interest of the citizens, and so he came and requested this, brought us the documentation, showed us everything, and we couldn't see any reason why not to honor his request since he was asking for reduction. Okay, and we're going to get into our purchase orders, and Blake Hodges is here with us tonight on some of these public safety ones, and he may have some additional comments to add to some of these. But in our splash, we presented quite a few public safety projects because our, our system has become quite tired and aged. And one of those things was our phone system that ties into our CAD system and all at the 911 center that needs to be up and operational 24/7. And so we had actually already lost one workstation completely. So we were down to six terminals for dispatchers to take and receive and dispatch emergency calls. So this was one of our splash projects, was to upgrade this system. We had put this off as about as long as we felt like we could. We were very much on borrowed time. The company had approached us months back saying that they would even do a lease purchase and allow us to lease purchase the equipment if we were willing to sign a 10-year agreement. And the documents that they presented was that we would pay $50,000 a year for 10 years to provide this system, and then in 10 years, they would come in and put another system in, and you would just keep that cycle going forever to the future. You would pay $50,000 a year for this type of phone equipment that's needed to tie into our, to our system. Being able to take this as a splash project and be able to provide the funding and pay cash, you can see instead of the county spending $500,000 on a phone system, we were able to invest $190,000, $190,381. Their $50,000 proposal, $50,000 proposal included seven stations for dispatch. We were able to get eight stations for the $190,381. So the, the details of that invoice is in the packet, shows all the information, all the install and discount and all. Chief Hodges, I don't know if you have anything additional to add on that one?
No.
Okay, all right. So we're going to approve this purchase order. Okay, with that, our, we have a purchase order 2021-427 for the new E-911 Dispatch Control consoles. These consoles are actually, will raise up and down, and will allow our dispatchers that work 12-hour shifts to be able to adjust that if they want to, basically, I guess, sit on the floor, or sit in a chair, or stand up. The whole console is automated and will come up, and again, you will see that in the drawing, the picture, the drawing schematic references seven consoles, but there is another room that has the eighth console in it. So this is a, a new layout, and will give better service, and this provided all of the install and all the setup to get these consoles. So Blake, do you have anything else to add on the consoles?
I guess more importantly, I just want to take the opportunity to thank our wonderful dispatchers for what they do. They do not get enough credit. They've been working out of the consoles that they were previously in for a long time. The center's been there a long time. They've been replaced. They had used ones initially, and they purchased one of those, but they were falling apart. They were, they weren't really conducive to the environment, and they were sitting in there for 12 hours. So much-needed purchase, it has greatly helped, and I've gotten a lot of comments and very appreciative comments from the employees and dispatchers.
Yeah, one thing too, with the old consoles, not only falling apart, but they really were not set up for the new technology, and so they were makeshift and, and really, it was really sad how they were having to makeshift those. And so this gets, gets us up in the 21st century with those. The next item is a purchase order 21-430. This is for the purchase of a used 2013 Chevy Express van, a G1500 for the coroner's office. Our previous coroner, Dwayne Wilson, had used his vehicle, and the county provided service on that vehicle, and that agreement had been in place for 20 years. And so with Dwayne departing at the year-end, we did not have a vehicle that would be assigned to the new coroner. Our new coroner said he didn't have to have anything new as long as it was dependable and reliable. And so we looked around, we had bought several other used vehicles from North Georgia Auto Sales. They get in many times fleet vehicles through the, from the federal government or through the GSA. So if you'll notice, this 2013 Chevy van only had 15,500 miles on it. And so I took Billy up and let him drive it and look it over, and he got excited, and he said, "That van will be absolutely perfect because it is a cargo van. It doesn't have seats in the back, has the two captains' chairs." He preferred a van over a pickup truck. He asked that, his request was that we find him a van and not a truck, and so I wanted to honor his request. But this was one that we needed to get going because he needs to be able to, to be rolling if needed at 12:00 midnight on January the 1st. So we are having, the window's tinted in this vehicle, and he should be ready to go in this vehicle tomorrow evening. They should have it ready for us. So felt like this was a great buy. The vehicle is in great condition, still smells new on the inside, even with it being a 2013. Again, it's just got a little over 15,000 miles on it, and we were able to buy local and buy something used that he would be very happy with. Okay, the next thing, we've got a couple of purchase orders here, and this was also in our splash project. And I'm going to let Blake, if he would, give a history of the portable radios and how old they are and how all that come about, and then what the total capital investment would be and what we're doing in phases.
The individual that would best explain the IT part of this is not here, but I want to thank Curtis Kriemer, who's the deputy, nine-one-one director and emergency manager, and also our director of IT. He couldn't be here this evening, so you get me, and I'm going to ask the sheriff to come up in just a second. Been sheriff's been here a long time, done a great job, and knows the the history a lot, probably a lot better than I do. But we have, we have, as far as the portable radios that you see in the in the resolution, the, we're trying to replace, we were notified a little over two years ago that Motorola was going to stop supporting basically our radios. They're going on twelve years old, and they were purchased, I believe, in late two thousand eight, early two thousand nine. And when it started, there was a, what we call a cache of radios. There was, we had radios in reserve. So you got to think about how many law enforcement officers are out there, firefighters, their units that they respond in, as far as the mobile radios, we call it. And these, these radios we currently have have served us really well. But as you know, technology is changing every year, and the, the support for the radios is no longer, we can't send a radio that has a malfunction or tears up, breaks, anything. We can't send that in to be repaired because the parts, it's supply and demand. The parts are becoming scarce. Cost of those parts are greater to try to replace or fix these older radios. So the, the county in, in two thousand eight or nine made one large purchase, as did in a joint effort regionally with Catoosa and Dade County, through the Chattanooga market to, and a grant, and a federal grant, that brought in all these radios to us at a, at a better price, in an eight-hundred better system versus a VHF. So these radios are more sophisticated, they're, they're robust, they can do, have a lot of capabilities to protect those that use them. And what's happened, though, is we've replaced, we've moved them to frontline radios, and we don't have an emergency management side, we don't have a cache of radios anymore. We knew this was coming. We've been planning, the nine-one-one board has been working on this and talking about this for some time. It's very, it's costly, we know that. So we, we all, we want to, we wanted to roll this out as a foreboy as we can. Sheriff Wilson had been in, in conversation with Sheriff Sisk out of Catoosa County, had been in communication with Dade County, and Motorola was offered an additional discount we hadn't, that none of us had seen before. So presented itself a good opportunity to look at purchasing. So myself, Sheriff Wilson, and his team, along with Curtis Kriemer, performed a needs assessment for emergency services within the county. And there's the need, we, we look at, you know, what we need now. So we formed a proposal, and we presented it to the commissioner. We felt like that proposal should include portable radios first. The mobile radios in the units are protected out of the weather, they don't get, they don't take a beating like the portable radios do. This is a portable radio, for those of you that may or may not know. And so that needs assessment, for a total replacement, we need one hundred and eighty-six radios. That's not any in reserve, that is frontline radios, that's the needs assessment for the county. Fortunately for the county, we are able to use our current radios until they expire, until they go bad. And we will, as we replace with the new radios, we will, we will move these existing radios into our cache, so in the event of a disaster or the need to use them in events or anything, we will have a cache of radios. So we're not getting a hundred and eighty-six radios, we're, we're, we're looking at, the sheriff's department in this purchase is getting seventy, and the sheriff will decide with his team where those radios go or are provided. The fire department's getting twenty, or forty-five portable radios, we will, we will place those accordingly. And then this is, this is about half the allocation, should it, should the projected one million dollars get collected. We are also, moving forward in years to come throughout this splash, would like to, you know, buy a few radios a year. We'd like to see the county get in a position to where this is purchased annually as replacement and technology improves versus having to come out and spend, you know, in the next decade, another million dollars all at one time. So that was the purpose and the plan of the portable radios. Sheriff, if you want to add anything to that?
I don't know of anything. Certainly be willing to take questions at the end of the, I guess, the meeting, but I think you've covered most everything. This came about back in the summer when I was notified that Motorola was possibly offering some incentives and some discounts to our neighboring county in Catoosa County. So I immediately made contact with the EMA director, fire chief Blake Hodge here, and discussed it with him and told him that we probably needed to inquire and investigate what these discounts would be, because we knew as a nine-one-one board, we had already been discussing the fact that the portable radios were going to expire in about two years. We had already been notified that the parts would not be available for them, you know, and people says, well, that's just an old story, marketing trick. Well, it could be to some extent, but we felt like it was a valid, that Motorola was being honest with us with these radios that were twelve years old. Certainly, you know, in the next two years, fourteen to fifteen years old, we're not going to be serviceable anymore. And they're used, you know, most of them are used, you know, frequently, daily, you know, as shifts change, they're in and out of the car, they're using them, just like anything else, like a car, it's going to eventually wear out. And I think it's a good proposal. I think it's a good value for the, for the equipment we're getting, and I'm in support of moving forward with it.
One thing too, that we were doing our assessment, in fact, we were working on the splash budget and looking at the both portable units and the mobile units, which are the units in the trucks or vehicles. It was, it was basically a need, if we were just replace them all, like was done twelve years ago, we were looking somewhere around a need of about two million dollars. And so the, everyone agreed that these radios are getting end of life, but many of them can still be in service, and so we can do a gradual replacement. And so we budgeted one million dollars to replace radios. So this purchase order here is for four hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars to get the hundred and fifteen. And again, this is just replacing some of the portables to the front line and take those that are currently being used and move those into reserve or into the cache. So we're not throwing them away, we're not selling them, we're still going to be using them and try to stretch this budget dollars over the six-year period and also stretch the use of these radios, because we've not even yet addressed the mobile units that as well over time will have to be upgraded. So it will take a, the next splash cycle or some other funding source over, you know, year seven, eight, nine, or ten or so out there to keep this radio replacement going, or you end up back in that situation where all at one time, you're looking at a couple of million dollars. And so we definitely wanted to take advantage of this. And then also, the next purchase order we've got coming up, we got some additional discounting on these as well, because we're going to move forward with the nine-one-one tower on the south end of the county that we'll talk about here. So we'll go ahead and accept this purchase order for the four hundred and ninety-four thousand, three forty-five to purchase the hundred and fifteen radios that we spoke about.
Commissioner, I'll add as well that this is close to a ninety thousand dollar, the additional discount that we, that we've seen, we were seeing this year, with this purchase is about ninety thousand dollars savings. So it's important to cast that out and realize that these radios are the lifeline for the public safety. So they're, they're much needed, it's much appreciated.
And in this next big document, and you have an abbreviated version, because I think it's about sixty-something pages, and it is online for, you can see the entire version, but the proposal for the portable radios and the nine-one-one tower are both in here in this one document, so they were able to pull that together to get us the greatest discount. Because when we first started looking at adding this additional, what they call an Astro five-site repeater system for a nine-one-one communication system, the first proposal that was presented to us was a little over one point five million dollars. And so Blake, I'll let you talk about the history and the situation that we have with this.
Sheriff, I'll get you back up on this one as well, because you've got the historical value of, and guys been out in these zones. Again, in two thousand eight, it was initiated in a regional effort to, when they brought the eight-hundred system in. Obviously, you have the radios that you purchased, but you also have to have the support of the towers and the, and the technology. And the, for, for, I wasn't here, so for whatever reason, the, there was an additional area that was needing, that needed coverage. These towers can cast what I'll call a shadow in a valley that can cause there to be poor communication, to the point of no communication. And we have the fire department in these areas, and, but more importantly, law enforcement is out there every day on the radios, all day. Believe it or not, you are sitting in one of the areas that were shadowed in the city of Lefet by the lack of the additional tower that we're talking about purchasing now. Where we, where the tornado hit, the one fifty-one Halls Valley area, we were, we were unable to communicate well from that area. Just to put in perspective, give you an example where you could, you understand what we're talking about. So I wasn't here, so I don't know why it was left out. I can only assume that it might have been because of funding back then, but we have two towers in the county. We share one with Dade County Canyon Ridge, we have one on Taylor's Ridge. This type of, you know, so these, these radios, these towers bounce signal back and forth with information. But we have a, we have a large area that's shadowed, and that's a lot of the city of Lefet, the south, south, south portion of the county back. We're still going to have, and I want there to be any kind of misconception that this tower is saving everything. We're always going to have, it's not perfect, we're always going to have areas that go in either in and out of having coverage, or we just don't have coverage. There's, there's places in the pocket or up on Pigeon Mountain in certain areas that we're just not going to have that communication. We have to, there's, there's ways we adapt and place units and, and utilize different technology for communication in those areas. But with the addition of the tower that's going to be, and you guys will have to correct me if I'm wrong, but it's going to be a, it's a crest drive, it's going to be on Pivon Ridge. So that, that tower is going to provide coverage in Lefet, this southern portion of the county in the one fifty-one Halls Valley. It's just, I, I guess until you experience it, it's extremely dangerous to be in the public safety world and not be able to communicate. The sheriffs, the firefighters are at least traveling in a unit with two people at a minimum. The sheriff's deputies are out there by themselves, city of Lefet police are by themselves, and that radio is their lifeline, is their partner, and we need them to work. Again, I'm very, very grateful for the addition of this tower, because I think that, you know, we, we obviously are tall, it's, it's just ingrained in us that safety is number one, and it comes at no cost. So I realize that this tower is expensive, but it is much needed, it's past due, it should have been in place twelve years ago. That's behind us, we're moving forward and getting it in place, and I'm looking forward to, you know, having it a lot safer for the public safety personnel that are out there and utilizing these radios every day. Sheriff, anything additional to that?
Well, the chief's much nicer and chooses his words much better than I do. He says shadowing, and I say it's a dead zone. When you get out into these areas, it's completely unable to communicate with the nine-one-one center, which results in officer safety, firefighter safety issues. This has been going on for quite, well, for a number of years now. We noticed it pretty much right off when the towers were initially erected. And believe it or not, we started hearing the chief, Cliff, and his predecessors were telling us about right here in the city, in the square, when they were having those events like the honeybee festivals and different things, that they were, they were just having garble and scrambling of words over the radio right here in the city of Lefet, specifically on the square and right here in this area. And then we started hearing complaints from deputies who would be on one fifty-one Alabama Highway, Halls Valley, Waterville, Walnut Grove, Ridgeway, those areas were just, were intermittent, the, the communications were intermittent with nine-one-one. And so it's been a problem for a long time, a safety issue for a long time. And in some of those areas, in the Villanow area, as our commissioner elect knows, no cell service in a lot of those areas. So when the deputies were losing radio contact, they were taking their cell phones out and talking to nine-one-one that way. But as they got into some areas in West Amhercy, East Amhercy, those areas, Waterville, somewhere in those areas, they didn't even have the cellphone service. So yes, it's, it's, it's a lot of money to spend, but you can't put a dollar figure on a public safety officer's life who may need backup or may need other services that the dispatch can give them in a time of need. So again, we're, I'm very appreciative that we're moving forward with this funding for this tower, and it will not give us one hundred percent coverage, let's make that clear. I think Motorola has told us what, what, or they-
Ninety-five percent is what-
They're, they're telling us ninety-five percent coverage in these areas is what they can guarantee us, which is better than what we have now. And they won't never give you a hundred percent coverage, they won't never tell you a hundred percent, even if you're in, standing on lookout mountain at the tower, or, or on Taylor's Ridge at the tower, probably would be. But again, I appreciate Blake's work on this, to get this, along with the city of Lefet, to get this moving forward.
I think both of y'all were nicer than I will be. I went to a nine-one-one board meeting, which is basically all your, your leadership of your public safety being fire, EMS, and city and all, meet on a, on a regular basis and communicate and, and bring recommendations and so forth to the, to the overall greater good. And I attended my first meeting, probably a year and a half, eighteen months ago, and found out that we had this problem. And I was not aware of it. I don't know how, I guess the officers and the first responders had just dealt with it so long, they just adapted to it. And it just really, really broke my heart when I found out that we had our men and women in uniform out here that will get a call, go into a zone in the middle of the night and have no communication back to home base. And many times when these calls come in, there's a lot of times updates before those first responders get there of additional information that's coming in, or when that first responder gets there, they can radio back for the additional resources that are needed. And in this zone that we've got an issue with, they didn't have that. And so that was very, very troublesome to me. And so when we started working on our splash budget and our allocation, to me personally, this was by far the number one project that needed to be addressed as quickly as possible in this community to protect these first responders. And this is a collaborative investment with the city of Lefet, because this is going to help them so greatly. And also, they're also riding on this communication system as our, as our ambulance service providers. They use our radio system as well, and so, you know, a lot of times ambulance providers are also getting updates along the way. are also getting updates along the way. So, this purchase order here is for a million dollars even, which is what the proposal is. But in clarification, what we budgeted for in the county portion of the splosh is $750,000. The city budgeted $250,000 in their budget. So this is a joint venture, and so Walker County has taken the lead on this, and we're going to handle the contract in front, the spending of this. But I've been in direct communication with Mayor Andy, Andy Arnold, Curtis Creekmore, our point on this project, he's our project manager representing the county, has been in direct dialogue with Scott Wooton, who's the IT director for the city of Lafette, and everyone realizes we want to get this done as quick as possible. It's still going to be several months of implementation. I think the proposal says it's about a six to eight month build out, and they're going to try to, to get it done as quick as possible because they know we're in a situation where we, we need this coverage. On Peavon Ridge, and that ridge basically is just a little bit south of where the Lafette post office is, to give you some sort of idea what we're talking about, there's already two existing cellphone towers there. So if you look in that area, you'll see a couple of cellphone towers, and we explored the idea of putting this equipment onto the cellphone towers, and it did not make financial sense, and it was going to put us at a lower level. It wasn't going to get the equipment up as high to give us the best coverage at that 180-foot tower. And so the city of Lafette owns that property. So again, this is a collaboration with the city, where we're not having to buy property, we're able to install this tower and equipment on city property, being another government partner. We can, we can do that without having to cause us any issues. So, we're going to go ahead and approve this purchase order so we can move this forward.
Commissioner, we have, we have representation from Motorola here tonight, so I want to thank Motorola for working with us on the, on the pricing. We did, you know, we did go back and forth, they were really, really, really good to work with, so thank one thing Motorola. Reiterate the fact of how much help the 911 boards had in the city of Lafette, on behalf of the fire department management, we really appreciate it.
As you can see here, there's quite a thick document that has all the, all the details in it, and there's a signature thing here that I need to sign. Okay, the next item we have is another purchase order, 2021-468. Again, this deals with public safety, and what this system is, is the recording system that records all of the radio traffic and all of the phone call traffic into the 911 center. And this as well was on our list, and we thought we may be able to delay this a little bit longer, but this system, over the last couple of weeks, has become problematic. It's actually just shutting down. Curtis has had to put a protocol in place with the staff where they go through and check this system every 30 minutes to make sure that it is recording, and they're constantly having to reboot this system. So, the system that we're currently on is version five. And so again, it's out of date, it's old technology, the new technology, new equipment will be, as you'll see there, version 15. And so this will be a major upgrade, and this comes with the 32 analog seats. And so all of the city police departments, all of the communication traffic, well, all of our other public safety, fire, ambulants, sheriffs, all of that traffic coming into the 911 center, along with phone calls, people calling in for 911 assistance, is all being recorded as long as this system is up. And so this is the detail, and so we are rushing as well to get this one done in hopes that they can get this equipment installed before that system completely dies on us. So, we want to make this investment of $21,741.80, and again, this is part of our splosh allotment. This next one here is to handle the last documentation on the Erlanger settlement. And David, you want to take a stab at this and give a summary of what we're doing here?
Well, as you're probably aware, the county previous administration entered into an agreement with Erlanger to provide up to $20 million to provide service for what we call Hutchinson Medical Center. And the bottom line is, is that that deal didn't work out, put it mildly. And so, they, Erlanger filed suit against Walker County to recover the portion of that 20 million that the county obligated itself to pay. And Commissioner Whitfield was able to enter into a payment plan to take care of that. And actually, the payment, the final payment was made in advance of the original scheduled time. So as with any lawsuit, there's paperwork that you-
Sign.
Both sides sign. That says, okay, this is over. So, I'd be happy to go into any specific questions you might have, but basically, the lawsuit is being dismissed with prejudice, which means that neither party will ever be able to bring an action against the other party as related to this. And they are, each party is releasing the other party from any further claims regarding this. This has been a unpleasant situation, but it has been now completely resolved. And through negotiations by Commissioner Whitfield, the amount paid is actually less than the total amount that judgment centered against. And in addition to that, we were able to pay it out over time. We found any interest being accrued, so everybody's glad that this is offered for county's back. And this, this is a good thing to do, we bring it to conclusion.
Thank you. The agreement that we made with Erlanger, because they had a, they had a federal summary judgment, which is basically a demand from the federal courts to pay up. And in that judgment, they had awarded Erlanger court costs, attorney fees, and interest accrual for that. And so, working with Kevin Spiegel at that time, the CEO of Erlanger, after many meetings and conversations, and them filing two additional lawsuits at that time, we were able to come to an agreement to them to drop the interest payments, both in the past and going forward, drop their attorney fees, drop all the court costs and any other associated expenses, and get us down to the base principal that was owed, which was $8.7 million. And so we did put a, a public health facility fee on the tax bills. We thought it would take two, excuse me, three years to pay this out, we were able to pay that out and collect the funds in two years. So we were able to completely drop the third year because collections were stronger than we first thought they would be, and we were able to sunset that early. We collected the funds, like I say, basically a year early, I reached out to Erlanger and asked them if they wanted us to pay it off early, and if so, would they provide additional discount? And so they took it before their board, and they said, no, we're fine with you just making the payments. And so that's what we continued to do, we kept that money in our bank account where we were drawing 1% interest on that money. And so, as we rocked on those payments, there was 12 payments of $650,000. So we made quarterly installments of $650,000 per, per quarter, with a balloon payment being due December 31st of 2020, which would have been this week, of $900,000 was the balloon payment. What we did at the end of September, we went ahead because we had the funds, and I wanted to get it off the books before the end of the fiscal year, we went ahead and made the last two payments, the last week of September of 2020 at one time, which was $1,550,000. So we basically, you know, paid it off one quarter early. And I did that for a couple of reasons. Number one, I wanted to get it off the books for the, for the year end, and also, we were right in the middle of this COVID pandemic, and all of our hospitals have struggled because there's a lot of those elective services and surgeries that hospitals have not been able to do, where they've lost a lot of revenue. So I knew that Erlanger could probably use the cash flow and the funding, so I felt it was the right thing to do to go ahead and just get that done and over with. And so when you look at these documents here on page three of nine, you'll see the starting of that payment schedule, and you'll see that we would have had a payment due October 20th of 2020, the 650,000, which was installment 12, and then installment 13 would have been December 31st of 2020 for 900,000. That combined was $1,550,000. We paid all that off in September, so it has taken a few weeks with David working with the legal counsel of the hospital to get these final documents prepared. So we'll execute this, and they'll execute this, and then once and for all, this thing with Erlanger is done and over with. I guess just the only place I was supposed to sign. Okay, the next item on our list is an approval of a local marketing organization agreement with the Walker County Chamber of Commerce. This is to cover and to keep us in compliance with state law when it comes to hotel motel excise tax. The code section says that that money has to be within, as it says, whereas an organization is a private sector nonprofit organization exempt from income tax under IRC 501(c), which is willing to authorize to expend such funds for the purpose of promoting tourism in the county as provided by law. So, this is to formalize an agreement where the Chamber of Commerce would take their allocations of funds to utilize in promoting Walker County. There is a similar agreement that's been in place for many, many years, where the city of Lafette also uses the Walker County Chamber in the same capacity for the hotel motel tax from the city of Lafette. There is one provision in here on page three that talks about, in consideration of the organization's administration of the funds referred here within, the county agrees that the $2,500 or up to 20% of the total yearly excise tax remitted by the county to the organization, whichever amount is less of the tourism promotion fund will be used to help fund the operation of the Walker County Visitor Center. So if you go into the civic center that has been deemed and, and has been posted by the state of Georgia as a visitor center for the state of Georgia in Walker County, and so they allow some additional proceeds to go to that operation to fund that. There is a change in the rate, you'll notice on the first page, where from October 1st of 2019 through September 30th of 2020, the tax collected was at the 5% rate, and then starting October 1st of 2020, September 2021, it increased to 8%. So this was a gradual roll-in phase-in, where we went from 5% to 8%, and so the allocations are different there. All of that is guided by the OCGA, we didn't make up those percentages or those allotments, all of that is spelled out by the state, and we have to follow those guidelines very strictly. So this just actually enters this into the agreement with the Chamber of Commerce, is the agency to handle that for us. The code section does not allow for the county government to do that itself, it has to be done by a third party, we don't have an option. The next item we have here, this is an annual agreement that's done with the Georgia Public Defense Council, do one of these every year. This is in collaboration with the, our other three judicial circuit counties being Dade County, Jutuga County, and Catusa County. So Walker County is, like of terms, I guess the host county or the physical agent that handles from, from the budget standpoint. Our county attorneys looked over this, this is very similar to the agreement that we sign every year, this has a copy of their budget. And so this helps keep down the expense for all the counties, this is a way we can all work and collaborate together to provide public defense to people that don't have the funding to provide for legal counsel if they're facing criminal charges. And so, working in this collaboration keeps that cost down for all the counties. This is something that's been in existence many, many years, it has worked well. Since I've been in office, I've not ever had the first complaint. They do an outstanding job and provide a service to people in our community that cannot provide the funding for their own legal counsel for, for, for court. So we're going to sign this agreement. Basically, this, again, is just a renewal. And we have Jad, right? Jad's in the audience with you. Jad, you got anything you want to add? You're the representative and the head guy for our public defense office.
Thank you, Commissioner. The only thing I just want to add is just our appreciation for the Commissioner and all the other counties, that we are so pleased to be able to provide this service for our counties, and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. This other document here that she slid to me, this is just an original where all the other counties are signing, so I was wondering what else I'm signing here. This is the same agreement, this is just a master copy. And actually, for, for those that may be watching that don't know, here in Walker County, the Public Defender's Office is in this building, down this front hallway here. When the Annex II building was damaged a couple of years ago, they had to vacate the Annex II building where their offices were. So, we first thought we would move them over here temporarily, and when we renovated the building, they liked it so well, they said, can we just stay? And so, they have an office location in all four counties, and they have attorneys that focus in certain areas of the, of these four counties and certain types of case law, I'm sure. But they've been great partners and great folks to work with here. Like I, like I say, I've never had the first complaint or anything come up. So we appreciate you being here with us tonight. Okay. All right. Next item that we have here, I'm not going to, going to read this, but I'll just give you a little bit of an overview. This is an agreement with CHI Memorial to provide storage for us, for our coroner, when the coroner- When the coroner has calls and someone has passed in our county, we need to have somewhere to take them. In the past, Wilson Funeral Home has been very gracious to allow Dwayne to take bodies to their facility and has not charged the county anything to do that. And so with a new coroner coming on board for the county January 1st, we felt it was appropriate. And in speaking with our incoming coroner, he agreed that we reach out to CHI Memorial. They did a similar agreement in 2019 with Catoosa County. So at the CHI Memorial Hospital in Fort Oathorpe, they're on the hill. There is a morgue at that facility that CHI owns and operates and maintains. They're gracious enough to not charge us an annual fee. There's no upfront cost. There's no investment. The stipulation is, is that if a body stays there more than 72 hours, then it's $100 per day for every day that that body is there. And so that's just for them to be able to provide the service for others that have that need and to keep someone from, you know, being left there for long periods of time. And so this is a pretty self-forward agreement. Again, this exact agreement was adopted by Catoosa County. They sent over the document to us. David made a couple of just really minor changes. They agreed to it, no problem. Goes off into the procedures and the terms and conditions. But this is definitely one of these things that we needed in place before January the 1st. And so we wanted to get this document executed so we can move forward with this agreement and so CHI Memorial can sign off on this agreement tomorrow. Okay. The next item here is a rental agreement with the Georgia State Properties Commission. I'm not going to read this. This is pretty self-explanatory, self-understanding here. But this is one they didn't get to us until just recently. But the term of this actually is going to commence July 1st of 2020 and ending on June 30th of 2021. And then the tenant shall be permitted to extend this agreement for four consecutive one-year renewal periods. The tenant can give the landlord at least 45-day written notice. So what this is, if you're familiar in Rock Springs where the driver service building is, where you go to get your driver's license renewed. Since Walker County is the largest population of the four counties, we have the service center. So that service facility is owned by Walker County Government. And so ever since they have been located there, the county has rented that facility to the state. And so what they originally asked for was for an agreement that would extend up to eight years. To stay within state law, I don't need to be executing documents that are past my term. And so we asked them to back this down to a four-year option and they agreed to do so. I think there's actually where they paid $10 per year. But the other side of the compensation is when the state patrol, is my understanding, when they write tickets, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's my, thinks my understanding is that ticket revenue that the state patrol collects or cites, when it's paid into the court system, goes to the county and it does not go back to the state. And so that's one of the reasons why local county governments will provide the building space for driver services as well as the state patrol barracks. So the state patrol barracks here on Main Street in Lafette is also owned by Walker County and maintained by Walker County and is also rented to the state patrol in exchange, again, for the ticket revenue that they take. So again, this is something due to COVID that got delayed at the state, a lot of them working remotely. But this is pretty much standard language and would allow them, before they were doing these annually, and they've decided that they want to extend these out so they're not having to do them every single year. So they do have some options there. Okay, the next item we have is a Resolution R 48-20, a resolution of the Sole Commissioner of Walker County to adopt the official county seal. Whereas the following seal has been used by Walker County as the official seal for many decades. And if you'll notice on the seal, that's what brought this to our attention, the seal says the Seal of Commissioner, singular. So that's why this needs to be updated is because January 1st will have a Board of Commissioners, plural. And so this seal also utilizes the picture of the courthouse. And many communities are moving away from using the courthouse as their symbol or as their seal or their logo. Whereas the governing authority of Walker County will change from a sole commission form of government to a Board of Commissioners on January 1st of 2021. And whereas the seal will no longer be applicable at that date, and whereas the county adopts use of the new logo in 2017 that contains of a eagle flying over Walker County symbolizing freedom, a connection to nature and the opportunity to soar to new heights. And whereas the county logo more accurately reflects the characters of the community. And whereas the logo will become the center of the official county seal, therefore be it resolved by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, beginning on 12:01 a.m. Friday, January 2021, the following variations shall be the official seal of Walker County. So on the next page, you will see the new seal, which basically has incorporated the logo we've been using for some time. Two, the legal effects of the seal shall be the same whether it's affixed or rendered in color or black or white. Three, the seal or logo shall only be used by county personnel for official county business and for other purposes authorized by law. Number four, no person or organization shall exhibit, display, or use the county's seal or logo in a matter like to deceive or cause confusion or a mistake. No person or organization shall exhibit, display, or use the county's seal or logo for the purpose of conveying or in the matter reasonably calculated or conveyed of false impressions or sponsorship or approval by Walker County or by any department agency instrumentally thereof, so resolved and adopted the 29th day of December of 2020. So I did provide a couple of different, two different renderings to the incoming Board of Commissioners because this is not something you probably do maybe once every 100 years or something. But we didn't feel, once we brought to our attention, that this old seal really deflected the new Walker County. And so this is a time to take the logo and as it indicated, the connection to nature with our Walker rocks and the freedom and soaring to new heights. And we feel like that we wanted to get that done as quickly as possible because any judicial grants, and there's several of them that come to this body, has to have the seal affixed to those documents. And so we wanted to be able to get the new seal ordered. And so if we have any grant awards that come through the drug court or Superior Court or we get things through juvenile court, there's these ongoing grants. We did not want to forfeit any grant by fixing the wrong seal to that grant. And so this one here just simply says the Seal of Walker County, Georgia, and then deplex the logo inside of that. So we'll get this signed so we can get this resolved. Okay. Our county attorney tells me that we've got one last resolution that needs to be done is we transfer from a sole commission form of government to the Board of Commissioners. So our last action item I'll read here tonight, it says a Resolution R 049-20, a resolution of the Sole Commissioner of Walker County to transfer the governing authority of Walker County to the Board of Commissioners of Walker County. Whereas the Sole Commissioner of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas on November 6th, 2018, the voters of Walker County elected to change the governing authority from a sole commissioner to a five-member Board of Commissioners. And whereas the Board of Commissioners takes office on January 1st, 2021. Therefore be it resolved by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that at 12 a.m. on Friday, January 1st, 2021, the Board of Commissioners shall become the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. Be it further resolved that any and all prior contracts, official actions, or legal obligations performed by or owing to or from the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, are submerged and assigned to the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia at the end of 2020. So resolved and adopted the 29th day of December of 2020. Also tomorrow, it is scheduled at 2:30. Where all five commissioners, I believe, as far as I know, everybody can make the time that the probate judge has set up, where all five of us that will be the new Board of Commissioners will be sworn in at 2:30. Due to the COVID, the court system has limited the number of people that can access the courtroom at one time. And so each commissioner can bring up to seven people with them at their discretion and they've asked us to limit that. So Joe is working to be able to live stream that tomorrow as well so people can witness the swearing in of the new board and as we take a new step forward in Walker County and create history as we close out the 2020 year. And so y'all that are out there that want to tune in and see that or want to watch that recording, that will be streamed live on our Facebook page, if all of our technology works. Speaking of technology, we had not been able to have reliable internet into this building up until just a couple of weeks ago because the service we had would get throttled a lot. We didn't have good consistency. So we now have entered into service arrangements with Ringo Telephone Company. They have ran fiber internet into the business district of the city of Lafette. And so they are rolling out services to our county facilities. And we now have a dedicated fiber optic connection to this building as well as our other courthouse, the sheriff's office, and to the commissioner's office. And so that gives us the consistent of having a dedicated service with the same upload and download speed that allows us going forward to be able to stream all of these meetings live going forward. Where before, we just didn't feel like we had the capacity to make that happen and be high quality. So this meeting here tonight is being streamed live and Joe will stream the swearing in tomorrow. And then the meetings going forward will all be streamed. So at this time, the last item that we have, as we adjourn our regular scheduled meeting, open discussion, business on agenda has been completed. We'll open the floor for general discussion related to Walker County. Speakers are asked to limit their questions or comments to five minutes and keep their topics to the county business. There will also be, just to note, there will be a special call meeting of the Walker County Board of Commissioners at 6 p.m. on Monday, January 4th, 2021. This will be the Board of Commissioners to take action on a couple of items in conjunction with the Enabling Act. And those two items are to, for the board to elect within the board, a vice chairperson, and also to set the time, date, and location for the next year of where the board will hold its meetings. The Enabling Act says that the board has to conduct two meetings per month. And those meetings have to be within the city of Lafette being the... Yes, thank you. The county seat, the venue that we have is a county seat. So they need to be within inside the city of Lafette, in a county building, in the county seat. And so the board will make that decision and will do so annually. Will set where the location and the time and the date of those meetings. And will also annually elect a vice chairperson to serve for one year. So going forward, you know, I've been elected to be the chairperson, but due to, anything can happen from COVID to me getting hit by a bus or anything. So it was recommended by one of the board members, which I thought it was an outstanding recommendation, to hold a special call meeting as soon as possible, as soon as possible, really with the main objective of electing a vice chairman. So if something happens to me, then the probate judge doesn't have to step up and take control of the day-to-day operation. The vice chairman then would step up based off of the Enabling Act. So who we'd like to be first, we'd ask you to come up to the podium and state your name and we'll give you five minutes due to everyone's time. Yes, sir, come on up, please, if you would, state your name.
Mr. Commissioner, my name is Randy Chandler. I'm a citizen here in Walker County. Tonight, Mr. Commissioner, I'd like to share with you some comments and speaking on behalf of myself, and also on behalf of citizens of Walker County, and specifically citizens of the Duck Creek Preservation Society. Mr. Commissioner, it has been with overwhelming disappointment that we, the citizens of Walker County, learn by other means as to your involvement and support of the proposed Healthy Foundations Integrated Healthcare Campus and Facility. We, the citizens of Walker County, are publicly requesting your position as Walker County Commissioner regarding the development establishment of such facility. In addition, we are formally petitioning you as Walker County Sole Commissioner and affiliated federal, state government officials and representatives in accordance of Georgia Code Section 9-11-11.1, submitted the following resolution to object Healthy Foundations Integrated Healthcare Campus to be constructed and located on South Burt Mill Road in Walker County, to stop and cease any further action on your behalf or other government affiliated officials allowing this rehab center to move forward within its development. After attending the public meeting comprised by the Healthy Foundations Organization, is apparent that the facility and founders of the representatives do not have a clear business plan or execution strategy for this facility. With that said, their lack of preparedness, transparency, and outright not considering and knowing all possible factors of plausible impacts to our community has escalated our concerns and strong rejection in allowing this facility to establish itself in our county. One can review the public meeting recordings and clearly observe our concerns and overview of the meeting. After learning of this project, we have reason to believe you and other government representatives conducted all negotiations behind closed doors and without public input. These actions are alarming and concerning in their entirety. These actions appear to be very similar in nature to express concerns of the Mackamore Co. Preservation Societies regarding the establishment of a proposed chicken slaughterhouse in their community. Is this how our government officials wish to conduct themselves with the affairs of our county? Moreover, similar concerns arise with such project as this. Healthy Foundations did not conduct sufficient or necessary impact studies to determine the feasibility and overall impact of such a facility on our surrounding community. Healthy Foundations has not established itself as a credible resource for this type of project. In fact, by their definition, this will be the first of its kind in the United States. Healthy Foundations plans to hide under the Healthy Foundations plans to hide under the guise of a comprehensive healthcare facility when in fact will be operating a drug and alcohol rehab facility until their plan has rooted too deep in the public to reasonably undo any damages and excess to increased expense upon our citizenry. A facility such as this type will result in increased traffic patterns, pollution, diminishes aesthetics, and property values for nearby landowners. The parcel upon which this facility will be placed has not been zoned for such establishment, or has it? Has the property been rezoned, and if so, was it according to Georgia Code? Specifically, our concerns and rejection of this so-called rehab center can be summarized: adverse community impacts such as social, safety, housing, and education, economic, property value assets, infrastructure increase, or the lack of employment opportunities, and very concerning environmental impacts regarding our habitat and hydrology. We, as concerned tax-paying citizens, are formally expressing our concerns and rejection to this proposed project via this petition to stop action, which we have collected over 500 signatures as of this date of notification, and with high anticipation of continued support and acknowledgement from the citizens of Walker County. And I'd like to present you the petition, Mr. Commissioner.
A couple of things that I want to address, and then I think, thank you for putting this in writing and bringing this and speaking here tonight. You made mention about negotiations. There's not been any negotiations because they've not asked the county for anything. The county has not put any money into this project, nor is the county going to put any money into the project. They have not asked for any abatements, or they've not asked us for anything, nor would we give them anything. As far as the zoning, they had an attorney that specializes in land that took our existing zoning ordinance that's been on the books for many years, went through that, they did reach out to us, there was conversations with the county attorney and their documentation where they validated from their side that the property met the zoning requirements that they need. And so there's nothing been rezoned, there's nothing been asked to be rezoned. And so I have just been in support of the project because I see the people in our community that need services, that need help. We did not get involved with the realtor, we did not help them select the property, nor did they ask. They basically have communicated with us from an informational standpoint. They have not come to us for any type of assistance. The county, even the water authority for the county doesn't provide any utility service down this far into the part of the county, so there's no county services or anything to negotiate. There's nothing that has gone to be even as far as the Walker County Development Authority. They've not asked the Development Authority for anything. So I appreciate the work that you've done in putting this together, and I will go back and review this in detail, but just for the public record here tonight, I just wanted to clarify, there's been, there's been nothing to negotiate. There is no document other than a letter that they provided with their opinion of the zoning that their operation that they were proposing met the current zoning. Thank you. Yes, who would be next?
Christine.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up, please.
First off, I want to tell you, Steve, congratulations. He is our longest-running sheriff in Walker County.
I think that deserves a man.
My name is Karen Bradley. I am another concerned citizen, and it is also about Healthy Foundations. As you know, Commissioner Whitfield, we as citizens and neighbors against this Healthy Foundation coming into our area. We are aware that someone higher up, it doesn't really matter who, has been involved with this venture extensively in this project. We are concerned not only about our citizens, but more so about our students and our faculty at Gilbert Elementary for their safety and with the additional traffic that will be brought into our area because of the venture and what it's going to attract. And I know Steve will understand that, and as will Blake. We are aware that in the past, multiple times when this property was sold, it was always sold as a whole over the last 100 years. Do you understand or realize the reasons why it was always sold as a whole? Are you aware of the top souls that are on this property? And of these souls, if they are to be altered, what will happen upstream and downstream to the farms and the roads? Are you aware of the flooding that has occurred in this particular area over the last 100 years? About, how about upstream and downstream? The devastation that will occur below and above this property if the landscapes were to change for all the landowners north and south of this property? Do you realize that in 2009, we had a 500-year storm? That storm caused a lot of damage in this particular area because it hit right on top of Lookout Mountain. And on Easter of 2020, the tornado and the storm that came through our area, also even though it hit Halls Valley, it caused severe flooding on Chamberlain Road, Little John Road, South Burt Mill Road, and parts of 193. All that was underwater. The reason why I know? My son works for the city of Lafette, and we also have had damage during that day. I was out at 2:00 in the morning. Chamberlain Road and a lot of places were underwater, at least four inches. Little John was over six inches in certain places, and there's a lot of damage there. There is not enough area on this piece of property that will withstand the buildings that they are talking about or plan on putting here in the flood zones that already exist. Do you know that this property is, has a lot of historical value, including Native American, Civil War history, an old church, and the old Burt Mill Road traveled through there originally, as well as the old dinkylines? Cemeteries are associated with old churches. Burial grounds have been noted and documented to be on this piece of property. Do you realize that there could be families here in our local area that may have family members buried there on that farm? Our own city of Lafette is against this. The city already understands the destruction that will come to our community, not just the water in the sewer, but the total damages that it will happen to our city, our lives, our West Lafette community. Why do you feel that my hometown, the one I grew up in, and the families like mine, and others that have farmed in this particular area, in one aspect or another, for 100 years, from sharecroppers to cattle farmers? You know how the ground works. We know how the ground works when there is too much rain. Topography is not only, is not just leaving the trees like Delane Hunter mentioned at one of her meetings, but it's how the land lays. How will the changes harm the landowners to the north and to the south? Shouldn't you and our citizens be aware of what the repercussions are if the facility is to fail now or in the future? Do you know and understand that this could be far worse than the Erlanger deal ever was? This won't have to support the surround, you won't have to support the support of the surrounding counties to help you out. Someone from your own office showed this piece of property to these people, and you followed suit with it, with your own White House-style dinner that included, on August 25th, almost 125 people, to pat yourselves on the back. We as citizens are watching you very closely, and the upcoming ones too, to see if you're even worthy of being our commissioner chair. Thank you.
I'll make some additional comment I didn't think about a while ago. A project of this size will have to meet all of the state requirements through EPD regulations that are passed down by EPA. They'll have to have all of that approval process done through the NRC, and all of those things are regulated. So many of the concerns that you share, I know others share as well, and they'll have to prove that whatever they're going to do doesn't create problems. Also, the structures due to the size of the capacity will also fall under the state fire marshal's office. And so there may be a small building or two that may fall under our local jurisdiction, but overall, due to the capacity and being a public building, the requirements for the building and all for public safety will fall under the state fire marshal requirements. I've never been on that property, I've never, I never talked to the realtor, I didn't select that property, and so I want people to remember, we have a free enterprise system where people can make transactions on their own without government interference. And so you had a private landowner make a transaction to a private entity that's outside of local government. So once they start moving forward with their plan, if and when, then they've got to go through that rigorous process, both at the state and the local level, and all of their permitting. To this point, I have not seen or heard that they have submitted any permitting because they're working on all of their, their plans and designs and engineering and all, that's what my understanding that they're in the phase of. So again, other than just communicating with them and them reaching out to us, it's what we would do with any other business or individual that would come to us looking at doing some type of development, we would be there to answer their questions and as much as possible stay out of their way and let them conduct business in a free enterprise system and in a marketplace. So again, there's not been any money exchanged or any approvals. There's nothing, there's nothing that they've come to us with to approve or disapprove. Everything has just been what you've seen in the, in the public display. Let me see if anybody else, and I'll come back, somebody that's already spoke once, we'll give it, yes, sir, come on up. If you want to come up, you've not spoke yet, but just out of respect, everybody else, and I'll follow back up to you. Please state your name, please.
Jim Burns. I'm a resident of Cobb County, I'm sorry, not Cobb County, Walker County, I used to work in Cobb County. Anyway, my property joins this proposed development. First, I wanted to ask sheriff a question, sort of out of curiosity. Have you guys considered some sat phones, like in shift supervisor cars for these dead areas?
Sat phones?
Yeah, the sat phones, because you can get it. You can get the little hotspots, sat hotspots. I use those, so, anyway. Just to follow up to what my two predecessors had to say, you had mentioned, Commissioner, some provisions that we have researched. I don't know if these people doing the project have researched them, but I just wanted to make people aware of them. One was the zoning. You may be familiar. When they applied for the zoning, has it been changed from agricultural?
No, sir. No, there's not been any zoning changes at all.
So it is still agricultural?
It's like it's been, you know, forever long. I've taken no action at all on that property since I've been in office.
Because one provision in state law, if they go for a change of zoning, is anything that has to do with a drug rehab center or other facility for treatment of drug dependency, public hearings shall be held on the proposed action after the initial request for a zoning change. So there actually has to be two zoning hearings.
Request for a zoning change.
Okay, I'm just making sure we're all on the same page.
Sure, absolutely. Those are very good questions.
Georgia Regional Commission, here again, if they have to change or increase the size of this project, they have to submit a DRI. It's a Development of Regional Impact Application, which my understanding goes through you and then gets submitted to the state, and then the state has to approve it back through you to them. Here again, just to...
They've not submitted any.
Okay. I'm just making sure everybody's on the same page. We're aware of some Indian burial sites. Now, apparently, they haven't chosen to, as you say, research that yet.
I don't know if they are aware of any or not. I have knowledge of that.
But we have. We have. Same thing with an old church that used to be out there years and years ago, even before our time. And normally churches, especially country churches, where do you put cemeteries? Around the church. So there's an old wooden church, an old log church out there with a cemetery around it. Now, if they've researched that, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
But here again, these are our concerns because we're neighbors of this property. This is sort of heritage for the people in this area. Clean Water Act, my predecessor mentioned that. This is in a flood plain. I've seen that place flood. I'm on a hill, and I got flooded. They're below me. Here again, cemeteries, and that's basically it. Just to reiterate with these two previous individuals presented, just so you're aware of it going forward, we are watching this thing, we're prepared to do whatever we have to do, any legal action, to make sure that if, God forbid, it does happen, it's done correctly. If it's not done correctly, we don't want them out there.
We only want it done correctly as well, so we have a...
And so far, we've not seen any evidence. You say they're planning. They may be planning. Walmart planned before they built that building, but before they built that building, they had other things to get done, and they haven't done these things here.
No, no.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's fine.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, anyone else would like to speak tonight? Yes, sir, Mr. Burnfin.
Good evening, Commissioner Whitfield, commissioners-elect, elected officials, and citizens of Walker County, Georgia, fellow citizens. I love all y'all. Merry Christmas belated and Happy New Year with prosperity and happiness. I'm Ray C. Burnfin, proprietor of Bluebird Hollow Farm and Golden Sound Music, an incorporation that owns Bluebird Hollow Farm, quite a unique thing. And I live in this same plain, in the flood plain, and the creek goes through my property. And the flood of Easter Sunday overwhelmed the culverts down there. I mean, they carried the water, they never stopped up, but they, this was too much forming, and it just ran over the road and washed, and it gave me an idea of what I'm going to need to do for the future. I'm trying to work on the shoulder of the road down there, which hadn't absolutely hardened in no shoulder at all, right below my house, and I'm doing a fill in there, and I want to improve that to have more safety on the road down there. Now, my issue, I don't, I have an issue, but I want to educate you also on a program that is ongoing right now, and it is a program that is coordinated with the North Georgia Electric Corporation, and basically it is a new contractor company that is coming in to clean up the lines and protect, if any of y'all can remember back to the blizzard of 93. Down in this area where they're talking about, down below my house where I moved in June of 92, the storm for about a couple of blocks in distance there to the creek, the trees were just laced over from both sides of the road. And I'm avowed that that is not going to be an issue again, and my power has been out two or three times by falling trees down there. This gentleman approached me earlier on this year, a gentleman... This gentleman approached me early on this year, a gentleman by the name of Russ Maxwell, and he represents CNUC. That's a contracting company. And what their objective is, is to, where they've been, these legs of power that run off through the woods to this house and that house, where they've been having to mow and the trees grow, the growth, they've been having to bush hog every few years, and then it'll grow back up, and then they have to access back into the farms and the territory. They wanting to move all the power out on the road where they don't have to drive off into the woods and the fields to maintain the lines. This gentleman approached me and asked me early on this year, and I agreed. He says, if we come down here and trim some of these trees and just leave the limbs laying in the ditch down here, and we can cut them six, five to six feet to fit your bucket on your tractor, would you bring your tractor down here voluntarily and work and clean this? And I said, yes, I will. I volunteered, and I volunteered to help them. Now, they took down certain trees that had faulty, that were in danger of falling, and they had maybe, they had rotten places that were ready to fall. Also, I want to make you aware also that there have been incidents where trees have fell, blowed down in blizzards and winter storms right in front, and people have hit them and gotten killed. So I'm down here working a project down here where I have to take down several trees and fell them out in the road. And yesterday, I was approached, in fact, I was stopped from this project by deputies of the Walker County Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Wilson, you know, I'm going to criticize, but I'm not opening up for debate or argument about this. There was a deputy down there, Deputy Brewer. That man pushed me. I mean, he pushed me mentally up to, he challenged me. He's a bully, and he doesn't need to be representing my county and being paid on my taxpayer rolls. When I say he pushed me, he wanted me. In fact, he threatened me numerous times, several times, that I was going to jail and I'm criminally trespassing down there. And he says, who give you the authority to cut these trees? I said, well, I have the man's card up in my house at the office there. I don't believe you. Now, that's no way for, I don't want a deputy sheriff. He kept telling me, you understand, don't you? Don't you go back down there with your tractor? And he almost implied that I should not even be working with, using my tractor on the road, or that I could not drive back down there at any particular time. One or two of those trees is afoot off from the asphalt pavement, and he says, you're criminally trespassing.
I'm going to need you to wrap it up.
I understand. So I think I've said plenty. Now, I want to tell you too, and it's hard to criticize, I know the law enforcement individuals of all the law enforcement city and sheriffs, highway patrol, they're faced with tremendous, tremendous, and I understand their burdens and their issues. And I know that it's difficult to hire someone, and you can't guarantee how he's going to turn out. But this gentleman was belligerent with me, and there's witnesses. I had a neighbor, and other law enforcement people were there, and even they have agreed that, you know, they know his temperament, and they know. I would like to request that this gentleman be terminated or resign.
Thank you, Mr. Burnfin.
And I'm just using my First Amendment right.
Thank you, sir, very much. Okay, anyone else that'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come up. Please state your name if you will.
My name's Sharon Rowan, and I live in Walker County. My concern and many of Walker County citizens have a question about the Walker County Animal We count on them. We count on the animal control together, obviously, to help out our needs and animals' Information that I've read and has been told to me that you, nobody can call the Animal Shelter at all, they have to call your office. Is that true?
What was taking place is the staff was, a lot of their time was in the back, working with the animals, feeding, cleaning the animals, and the shelter was missing a lot of phone calls. So we were getting a lot of complaints, people trying to reach Animal Control or reach the shelter. So in a temporary quick fix, we started having those calls routed to the Commissioner's Office, gave our frontline staff people access to the software where they could log the Animal Control calls and take information. So someone's answering the phone during eight to five business hours, Monday through Friday. Well, you're in the midst of installing a new phone system, the Ringo telephone system, and they started with our installation today. Once that is rolled out, we'll have all of our county offices, so when those calls come in, they'll answer if they're trying to reach the shelter, then we'll be able to simply transfer those calls. And so hopefully, it's going to take probably a month for them to get all of the equipment installed, but that will get us to that next level. So when people called for the shelter, the call will be answered here and then transferred so a person doesn't have to hang up and call back over. And so we're working through that new technology to give a better experience for citizens trying to reach the shelter.
Okay. There's one information that I'm perplexed about, and there are some that are thinking the same thing. You have, there's dogs there now. You gave an answer as that you're training the dogs, that some shelters gave you these dogs?
We're not actually full-out training the dogs. They will take sometimes the dogs out and work with them to try to get an evaluation, the temperament of the dog. A lot of times, the rescue groups we work with will want to know if a dog is cat aggressive or animal aggressive or human aggressive, and so they'll take them out and play with them, and, you know, sometimes they'll, if they have the time, will, you know, try to teach the dog to sit or to fetch, those type of things. So that's what we're referring to as training. They're just working with them on a very limited basis, trying to evaluate at a low level the temperament of the animal to find the proper placement. They don't want to place an incoming dog that's cat aggressive or aggressive to other animals and not know that coming in. So they are checking the temperament of those animals.
I've heard that the animal control was not available during the Thanksgiving time, that there was like a four-day span of people calling. Nobody answered.
During nights, weekends, and holidays, if someone has a bike case, then the 911 will dispatch out the animal control. But animal control at this time only responds during business hours unless it is a bike case. And so, yes, we just had a four-day holiday last week, and also through the Thanksgiving holidays, and so animal control doesn't respond unless they're dispatched by 911 on a bike case.
Well, then, being that said, so what is your agenda for, excuse me, for other things that happen, such as finding a dog that, just thrown over the freeway, let's say, and still there?
We're currently typically not responding to other types of calls, other than just the bike cases. We respond to those other type of calls during the regular shifts of those employees, during regular business hours of those staff members.
So then what do citizens do?
Citizens will have to--
Take it in our own hands.
Take it in their own hands, yes, ma'am.
And so we're the ones have to scramble and find a rescue or a vet to take this dog?
In some cases, yes.
Okay. Is there a lack of staff or volunteers at the county shelter?
We don't have any staff positions open now. We have not had any volunteers through the COVID period at all. Even the volunteers that we had prior, we haven't been utilizing them through this COVID pandemic.
Do you foresee changing that for the citizens and the animals of Walker County?
If the world as a whole can get a handle on COVID, it would really help us a lot at the shelter because we are working hard to keep our staff healthy. Because, you know, there's many times dozens of animals there that have to be cared for twice a day, whether it's a holiday or a weekend, and so staff members go in to care for those animals. And so it's very taxing to our staff members, and we have had to limit access to that facility and have since COVID started to try to keep our staff members healthy. Thus far, we've not had a staff member at that location conduct COVID. We've had an instance where an employee quarantined because they had a family member that had COVID, but I think our policy there has worked because we've not had people in and out of there, and it's probably the only department in the entire county government that's not had employees with positive COVID.
Are you allowing rescues to come in and pull some of the dogs?
By appointment, just like when someone comes and reclaims an animal, it's by appointment. Someone drops off. All interaction into the shelter is by appointment.
And that means any rescues, so local rescues can do this?
If they talk to the shelter director and they, you know, have a reason to make an appointment and it's agreed upon time and date, then that's at the discretion of the staff.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
As a quick follow-up to what she was just saying--
Please state your name.
Janice Williams. As a quick follow-up to what she was just saying, although this, my issue is going to be different. When you take four days off and there are animal emergencies, it's a responsibility for animal control. That's what we're paying for. That's what our tax dollars go for. You don't allow anything else to do it in the county. Why can there not be an emergency basis for a severely injured animal? You just said yourself that at least twice a day, somebody is at the shelter. Those people are qualified to euthanize. The situation that I brought up at the last meeting was an emergency. If you don't want to take somebody and have them be on call except only for bike cases, which, how often does that happen in Shannon?
I don't have the numbers.
It's not. Very, very rarely. So when we have an emergency with an animal, people are already at the shelter that are capable of euthanizing that animal that was in that condition, but the gates are locked, so you don't want to get animal control out of bed on a four-day weekend, but you won't allow a citizen to take the animal there to be euthanized, a service that we are paying for. They are physically at the facility and able to do it, and you refuse to cooperate with the citizenry. And we continue to have to pay for it out of our own pockets, but we're already paying for it with our property taxes and our taxes. That's my point with that, as far as what she said. It's silly. You're doing it wrong, period. If you check with any other county or any other animal control or any other organization, you're doing it wrong. But you're not willing to communicate, have a conversation, or fix a situation. I'm Shannon Whitfield. I'm the emperor. This is how it's going to be done. And you just exhibited that with a commissioner that raised an issue, and before they even got voted on and elected, which is what the citizens wanted to do, you said on TV, the reason that they wanted to be on the Board of Commissioners was to share the spotlight. So you, yes, you did. We'll look at the video, please. Don't deny it because we need to have truth for a change. We will look at that. It was on Judy's program, sure was, and it's still on the internet, and that's what you said. Now, as far as leadership goes, we are citizens of this county. You continually say that you are serving us, and it's a privilege to serve us, but you're not doing that. I expect from you and from our new commissioners that are coming in, that you respect us as much as you want us to respect you, and you're honest, and you are not honest. You have not been honest about the shelter. The Department of Agriculture shut our shelter down with five pages of fails to include inhumane treatment of animals. The walls were chewed through. It was filthy and full of flies on your watch, and that was a poor decision that you made because instead of interviewing or getting qualified people to do positions in the county, you appoint based on a personal issue, and you appoint them. You appointed someone who was not qualified for that position. You watched that shelter get into that shape while you continued to tell the public, other places are coming to look at how well our shelter is doing, and the shelter's doing great, they've been called by God to do this, and everything was great with the shelter, and that was not true. That wasn't true. And when the Department of Agriculture shut our shelter down for inhumane treatment of animals, as well as the filth and the walls that were chewed through because they were being shut in bathrooms and other rooms, you immediately took Joe out there for a photo op and said, you're refurbishing the shelter. That's all the public heard, and everybody fell on their face and thanked you for refurbishing the shelter. Not that, okay, our tax dollars are paying to repair that shelter because you made a poor decision and you won't work with anybody else. You're making poor decisions. You've just appointed an animal control board without allowing the other commissioners any input on all of these things you just passed. It's days away. If you're willing to work with people and lead a team, you can wait a couple days. But you appointed an animal control board. What qualifications do you require? None. You do not have experienced people, other than a veterinarian, to make those kinds of decisions, and you don't have the knowledge or qualifications either, Shannon. Why won't you work with the community? And we're all a team, 68,000 people. And instead of squashing people when they know there's a problem, announcing publicly that they're complainers, and then telling absolute lies about them to the public, which I'm going to address that too, for when you lied about me on television--
I was, uh--
No, I'm finishing the statement. Thank you, because we've listened to you for a couple hours now.
Wrap it up.
When you lied about me on television and discredited me professionally and personally and lied, and your own, your own records show that that was not true, what you said, I've got thick skin. My integrity stands firm. My question to you is, why are you comfortable with lying to the entire county without blinking an eye? Take me out of the equation that you lied about me. Why are you comfortable lying to people? Why are you comfortable lying about what happened with the shelter and that our tax dollars were paying for that, and on your watch, and you knew what shape that shelter was in, but you didn't do anything about it until the Department of Agriculture shut you down? And you have not been honest with the public about it.
Okay, thank you. Your time is up.
I expect more from you in the next four years.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to speak?
I'm Randy Pittman, and I've got something short. I'd just like to request that the new commission take a look at other venues in Lafayette to hold meetings, other than limit the citizens to 24 people in these public meetings. I think it's important. I understand the COVID and the social distances, but we, the community needs to be more involved in this new commission. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Did the gentleman that wanted to speak again, is he still--
He's left. He had some other things he had to do.
Okay. Sorry about that. Anyone else here tonight wanted to speak? Okay, thank you again for being here, and just as a reminder about the swearing-in ceremony tomorrow, it will be on our Facebook, and then also the first special call meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be on January the 4th. So y'all be safe. Appreciate you being here today, and look forward to seeing you next time. Y'all have a good evening.